She was running late because she senior center.
Oh, hey.
Brianna Anderson.
I will cancel my text.
It is.
I was just gonna say it's like Parkin's nightmare.
Who are you?
Good, right, exactly.
Okay, I would like to call this April 23rd School Committee Business Meeting to Order. Mrs. Yell, can you take the role, please?
Nation Riordan.
I'm here.
Sarah Hall.
Here.
Breonna Higgins.
Here.
Brian Callahan.
Here.
Adrian Boger.
Present.
Catherine Shaw.
Here.
Julia Walker.
Present.
Great, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will now turn it over to Vice Chair Hall.
All right, we didn't receive any signups for a public comment. Was there anyone here who wished to make a public comment? All right, then we'll move on to our student recognitions.
All right, well, thank you very much. Let me slide this over a little bit. We have a wonderful group of students that we'll be recognizing tonight. And if you recall, I was fortunate at the January Full Day Professional Development to hear many of their stories really bringing the Portrait of a Graduate to life through the eyes of our students. Some very, very powerful stories, and I just want to thank them for wanting to share their experience in Newburyport Public Schools. And so we have a great presentation forthcoming. So the idea of Portrait of a Graduate, we've been talking about this for the past couple of years. As you recall, Portrait of a Graduate is a vision that was developed by over 800 students, parents, and educators, which tied directly to our strategic plan. The Portrait of a Graduate provides a vision that guides our decision-making and inspires our innovation. This year, a team of Newburyport educators and administrators are working with the New England Association of Schools and Colleges to bring the Portrait Graduate vision to life for our students. An important part of this work was to engage student voice through this pilot group. So tonight, we're recognizing 15 high school students that were nominated to be members of this pilot group that helped us develop the activities to be used with students across the district. They attended meetings, they wrote personal narratives, they spoke to the district faculty and support staff. These students have mentored eighth and ninth grade students, and most importantly, they've provided us with valuable feedback and inspiration of the work we do on a daily basis. So what I would like to do at this point is to bring up our two advisors, Dr. Tom Abrams and Mr. Tim Mahan, and we'll turn the program over to them. If I could just ask the mayor to be seated next to Brianna and Ms. Hall to be next to me. And then, Mr. Mahan, we'll just turn those mics up and stand in front of those two mics. That would be great. Thank you all very much.
It's not charmed, it goes.
Yeah.
You can angle it up a little bit.
Thank you very much.
So just as a little bit of an introduction, I think one of the most important pieces here is that when our students graduate Newburyport High School, we don't want them to just be a number on a transcript. We want them to have a story about their journey through the Newburyport schools and ideally the things that we've done to prepare them for when they leave here and enter the complex world that they're going to enter. Some of you might know, for the last two days, I've been stuck in Cuba with four students, and it was unplanned because of getting bumped off flights. Two of them were seniors, and I saw in action our Portrait of a Graduate as they were perseverant, as we problem-solved our way through things, as we were very patient and empathetic, as we survived Chicago Airport, Miami Airport, and Havana. And our hope is that these stories that students will tell tonight demonstrate some of the things that we've done to put them on the road for success after graduation.
Yeah, so one of the things we thought a lot about in the NEAS process was how you take an idea like Portrait of a Graduate, which can be super abstract for people. So it's words on a page, it's things you put in a letterhead, but when you bring it to teachers and you bring it to students, is it something that is just kind of there or is it the drumbeat of your school? It became very obvious to us that there was a really clear answer to getting it to be alive in your school, and that's to like get out of your own way and just think about the kids. We started a process of getting the teachers and students to think about the Portrait of a Graduate as their own identities, doing different activities. And then at the end of one of those activities, we asked the faculty which seniors and juniors, this was the worry all afternoon that those would fall down, would best exemplify that because that's how you can do some of the defining work. So when someone says, oh, we have a Portrait of a Graduate competency literate across all disciplines, what does that mean? Well, it means Claire Felner, right? And when you say, you know, someone who's socially, emotionally, physically well, what does that mean? It means Sean Miles. And when you have those touchpoints for kids to aspire to, when you have those definitions for teachers to look at as like North Stars, all of a sudden, the work comes alive a little bit. So the work we've done with these ambassadors of Portrait of a Graduate over the course of the year is how can their stories be roadmaps for other kids in our schools and North Stars for the teachers in our buildings? So do you want me to do that?
How would you like to point out? Creative problem solver idea. He came down, he got it added, but he put it up.
All right, so right now, we're going to give you a sample of what we did for our January PD Day. At that one, we had eight speakers and a poem, so we're going to do one speaker. And again, as like proof and action, she found out she was speaking about 12 minutes ago after I promised her today she was definitely not speaking. Michelle Sesnick, without further ado.
For one second, imagine being a single mother. Financial, emotional, and social burden pressuring you to fill the role of both parents. Hi, I'm Michelle Sesnick, a senior at Newburyport High School, and I grew up in a single mother-driven household. My mother filled our house with books ranging from the Harry Potter series to Jane Austen and a music variety including Bob Marley and Carole King. My mother was my first teacher, teaching me to be curious, passionate, and empathetic. Once I entered the Newburyport High School District in fifth grade, I found teachers and mentors in every corner. Dealing with middle school social pressure, I was inspired to create my own yoga club, the Drishti Club. I was supported by NOC administration to create a space where students felt connected to the community and found support among their friends. With the help of Mr. Mahan, I was pushed to always be curious, always ask the hard questions, be myself, be bold, and most importantly, be kind. The same year, Mr. Weber allowed me to present a 10-minute presentation on what was originally supposed to be a five-minute presentation. He helped me with my hours of research, and he showed me how fun learning and research can be. When I entered the high school, I faced hardships and I faced triumphs. Mr. Sturma, my teacher sophomore and junior year, showed me that teachers are your greatest supporters. Even when you stumble, they will always have your back, allowing me to take risks I would have never dreamt of being able to take. I joined clubs, I got a part-time job at the Newburyport Montessori School, and I found my love for working with kids. I found myself knocking on doors, working for them to be opened rather than just waiting for them to be opened for me. With advocates like Ms. Calisi and high school administration staff, I was able to gain the leadership position of student culture consultant, trying to form a more inclusive and supportive environment in Newburyport High School. With these skills, I have been able to have experiences such as becoming the first high school intern at Tufts University's Elliott Pearson School under the director, observing and assisting in cutting-edge psychological research. Newburyport High School systems have allowed me to use the skills I adopted from my mom and build upon them, finding my passion, my drive, and my values to hopefully one day become a child psychologist, which I'll be starting in the fall at Northeastern University. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Zoe Kukuba.
And I'm Sofila Franchise.
And this is our poem, Portrait of a Graduate. I am civically engaged. Bro models in our community serve as a lighthouse, teaching us how to be a life vest, a buoy of hope for others. This year, I can see my future purpose.
I straighten books in the children's section of a library while a girl reads softly to her sister, realizing a book in the right place brings a smile to someone's face.
I paint faces during making homecoming, scrawling lines of black to mark the whiskers of a tiger, eager children swaying in line to see my work.
I am literate across disciplines. Each new concept is a plank on the dock, our voices adhering them together. As we walk this boardwalk, we see benchmarks of success.
Inky black and blue ocean, my brush tipped as painterly strokes take shape. My middle school form's advancing me to a portfolio of expressions, an AP-worthy painting in the making.
I am we. We took a passion and transformed it into an action. I chose to take initiative for animal rights, and articulation helped my impact take flight. Logistics illustrated the issue and solution, and questions were the foundation for learning.
I'm a creative, innovative, and collaborative problem solver. Together, we navigated new waters before reaching the turbulent ocean, the real world. Our journey required effort and determination, friendship and compassion.
In seventh grade, we kayaked down the Merrimack River, some of us getting stuck in the reeds, but we pushed each other forward with our paddles. Even now, I encounter uncomfortable situations, deeper rivers and larger waves, but I use my mind like a paddle to propel me forward.
I am physically, socially, and emotionally well. The Bres, Mullen, NOC, and NHS, ports jumping off points for success. But sometimes, we become lost in the swirling abyss and the choppy sea of pandemic. Guidance counselors led us to safer waters, a beam of sunlight streaming through the clouds. They remind us that normalcy is a gradual process.
I believe nurses are the northern star shining amidst the night. Their comfort, the comfort of their support lessen the fear of illness and quarantines.
Meanwhile, teachers use seminars and group activities to involve voices which had gone silent, as if to rescue a lone shell from the tide.
With the help of so many lifeboats.
We learn to weather the raging storms.
I am prepared for life after graduation. We charted the course, marking our path forward by the constellations guiding us to the star that shines the brightest. Guest speakers and interviews, career days and college fairs invite us to explore what we could someday be.
Then, in higher grades, we build pathways of experience.
Just as the sandpipers skitter across Palm Island, dodging the crash of the waves upon shore, we challenge ourselves through harder courses. We navigate the ocean swell on swift wings as we see things from above. We look beyond a bad grade or inevitable mistake and embody the resilient flow of the ocean.
These schools shall always be our anchor. Our classrooms are our compass, guiding each of us to our unique ports as collaborators, innovators, leaders, and problems and citizens.
We hope to bring a sense of pride to those who help to steer our lives toward the world we claim to be our own. Thank you.
All right, I just want to, once again, thank you all. We want you to stay up there. We have your own posters to take home, and then, very important, the cords for all of your work, so you get, you know, ahead of everyone else. And then, right after this, we want you all to stay up there. We have, we'll take a photo op, and then we'll have one little presentation for a faculty member, and that'll be it.
These posters will be going up in the different schools in the district, so when you see the big ones, the kids are getting their own version, but these will go up in different schools for the students coming forward.
Awesome. And once again, I just want to thank Mr. Mahan, Dr. Abrams, all of the faculty and support staff, and first of all, our students. You guys are great examples. All of the work that you've done throughout this school year has really set, I think, the course on, you know, where we're going to be in the future, so, thank you. And just one, one last award. So the person that we'll be recognizing tonight is someone that absolutely never wants credit, behind the scenes, does a lot for the schools, for this program, did a lot for this program. And all of these posters and the graphics were designed by Mr. Callahan. Ms. Frealong, you want to? Can you get it?
Finally got some of the shorter people step forward.
There you go. Mr. Mahan said the shorter people step forward, but he's looking right at me.
Hold on, because the parents do parents.
Yeah, parents come on up if you want to. We're going to practice for the farms coming up. No wine in that, yeah. Enjoy the proud moment.
Sarah, you want to take a short recess?
Oh, sure. Yep, we'll, we'll take a short recess.
I have a question. Do you hear sandwiches?
Oh, okay.
I made a question. Yeah, I find this hard. Because it's hard, it's never, the other room's easier than this one.
Yeah, it is.
The city, the city of comedians, Trumpers, and there's a city meeting. I went there and I, and there's, it's all set up for a city. I don't know what the city thing is.
But, okay, so it's not really about the theme that's happening.
No.
It's just scheduling.
It's scheduling.
Okay, all right.
And we usually get short shifts.
Oh, really?
Yeah, those look great. What? I know, I was like, I was going to go speak to someone. Get out of here.
Very nice.
Yeah, Brian.
Let's see, oh, Andy. Where's Andy?
I think he just stepped out. He'll be right back.
Right, right, right. Oh, why did I do that?
Wait, not wait for Andy. It's just consent agenda.
They call this dead air.
Okay, Mr. Callahan, we're going to start with the warrants for the consent agenda.
Okay. I moved up the following named bills. The Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $682,086.2 cents. Be approved and forwarded to the city order for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first one is from the April 1st business meeting. Are there any corrections? I saw the one that you sent today, Ms. Yell, thank you for that. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the April 1st minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, the next set of minutes was from the April 11th Zoom meeting to approve the bus contract. Were there any corrections there? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Theo, you're up with the student rep report.
Thank you very much. We're off to a great start. All right. Well, starting off with the Bresnahan School, third grade students and staff had a successful ELAM CAS a few weeks ago. I'd like to thank Stacy Boucher for organizing, preparing, and executing such a seamless testing process. The Bresnahan is also celebrating National Mathematics and Statistics Awareness Month. This was started in 1986 to help increase interest, appreciation, and understanding of the field. Students will have weekly estimation challenges, bi-weekly math riddles, and a math spirit week. Thank you to our coach, Molly Farrell, for organizing this fun, school-wide event. At the Mullen NOC School, one moment, my computer is not being nice to me. Fifth graders are learning about the hydraulic cycle, water sources, and discussing the human impact of runoff from roads, businesses, and home properties, as well as agriculture. They will be touring the wastewater treatment plant, water treatment plant, the Little River Nature Trail, and Maple Crest Farm with presentations by staff at each location. Also, fourth graders are in the middle of their yearly state postcard race, in which each class attempts to collect as many postcards from all 50 states. The NOC Middle School Theater Department is in the final stages of preparation for their spring musical, Matilda. The shows will be on Thursday and Friday at 6:00 PM and Saturday at 2:00 PM. Lastly, at NHS, the Real World Design Challenge team tied for third place in the recent national competition. Congratulations to Peter Schumacher, Chris Rowland, Ben Healy, Will Tomowski, Parker Harding, Tommy Lynch, and Boden Gay. The National Honor Society also held their annual induction ceremony before April vacation for all incoming juniors. Congratulations to all new members. Students Rebecca de Oliveira and Katherine Dano represented Newburyport at the Massachusetts State House for Students' Government Day. They participated in a simulated joint committee hearing and executive session in the esteemed House Chamber, collaborating with Senator Jason Lewis and Representative David Rogers. Lastly, 30 students and five chaperones spent April vacation on a cultural exchange trip to Cuba. Students visited several community culture centers that have programs, often using the arts, to provide opportunities for people of all ages in the local neighborhoods. The group brought school donations that were handed out to the communities in rural Cuba. That is all from me, back to you.
Thank you, Theo. Okay, next, we have our Whittier reps here tonight. Thank you both for coming in. You can step up to this mic right here. We won't make you stand back here.
One of those short folks. Thank you for, for having us here tonight. I just want to start by saying I had the privilege of attending my first Whittier Tech School Committee meeting on April 10th. I just wanted to give some highlights of that meeting. It was a pretty packed agenda. It began actually with the nomination and appointment of chair and vice chair, and as you may be aware, Scott Wood of Hayrow was elected chair, and Ron Fitzgerald of Salisbury was re-elected to the vice chair role. The committee also held a public hearing on its proposed FY25 budget. I know that Ms. Holliday provided some updates last time, but for summary purposes, the committee did vote to approve, after the hearing, on the proposed budget, $30,650,935, representing about a 2.6% increase over FY24. The total assessment for Newburyport is $679,961. That is an increase of $65,741, or 10.07% over '24. So our percent of the operating assessment increased slightly from 2.27 to 2.51. We did have an increase in enrollment of three students from October 1 last year to this year, and as you know, our share of the capital assessment is a little over 11%. I also had the opportunity to tour the facility with students in it on Monday, which was really exciting to see, because at that meeting that I was at, also, the school committee voted to authorize the superintendent to submit a statement of interest, and that, so I was submitted on behalf of Whittier Tech by the deadline. And we, the district is continuing to look at ways for Whittier Tech and actually Northern Essex Community College to partner together potentially for a building project. Very early stages of discussion, and I think the plan from here is to conduct some sort of a study, kind of a planning study, to see what the options are and what this would look like, this possibility. I think actually probably Mayor Riordan, you probably know more than anybody, there's been some meetings with public officials, elected officials, legislators about the future of this direction. And I know that the Healy administration and the lieutenant governor are very interested as well, so it's nice to see so many parties collaborating on a potential solution. The building is, you know, dated and definitely in need of assistance, so... The building is, you know, dated and definitely in need of assistance, so it's nice that this opportunity has emerged potentially.
Good evening, Mayor Riordan, school committee members. I've just got a few updates on happenings around the school. On April 2nd, you might have heard about this, a vehicle hit a hydrant on the access road, and we were unable to shut the water down right at the hydrant, so forced us to have the water department come out and shut the main down at the street, which forced us to close school. Took about an hour to do the turnaround to get the students back out once they were in there. And it ended up taking several hours to repair that and make the connection. On April 4th, we had originally delayed the school opening because of weather. We had a two-hour delay, and about 6:30, we lost power to the building, so that turned into an all-day cancellation. We did not get the electricity back on until 3 o'clock the next morning. When they energized the power, we ended up having problems within the schools that had to be taken care of. Whittier Tech had a credit for life fair on March 2nd funded through an ESSA grant. This was an interactive simulation of saving, spending, budgeting based on career choices and lifestyles and decisions. As a way to teach financial education to our students. The fair was presented to junior students. Juniors were selected because they are beginning to head off to co-op job placements, and we would like them to learn how to be proactive about their financial futures. The Skills USA state competition is next week. Newburyport has two students competing in the areas of Career Pathway Showcase and Principles of Technology. They're all working very hard, and we hope to see some good results from that. And as of today, Whittier has 35 co-op employers in Newburyport, and, which are employing 81 of the Whittier students. I think that's pretty good. Thank you.
Stay right here in case we have any questions. Are there... yeah, go ahead.
How does it work with the... I don't know if it's gonna work. How does it work with the hydrant situation? I imagine that's a city infrastructure issue and not really up at the school at all, right?
A car hit the hydrant, and it bent the stem over, so it couldn't be, so the hydrant kept running. Then when they went to shut the gate valve off at the hydrant, it was full of dirt, so that forced them to shut the main down at the street.
But it's the same as if it would happen here. The city is fully in charge of all that.
So all the time it was the Haverwater Department that responded.
Thanks.
Do you have something?
Nope.
Oh, go ahead. If anybody knows, what is the timeline on the Northern Essex project? I mean, I know it's in the early stages, but is there a timeline?
They don't have a great timeline, so I guess I'll just piggyback on one, on what Mary was saying. So we did have a, before the announcement came out, the press release, we had a Zoom call with the Lieutenant Governor and all the other players involved. They're in the very early stages, so the first thing they needed to do was submit that SOI, which kind of keeps that MSBA money in play.
Oh, okay.
They have been talking with the Massachusetts Treasurer about that, so I don't think they have a timeline. I think the study will be the first thing that they do. I do think they're looking at possibly using some of the available space at Northern Essex right now, and that's something that could happen a lot quicker as far as space. Like I said, I am excited about this possible partnership. I mean, I think it could be a win-win for Whittier and for Northern Essex, and it could be a nice model for the rest of the region as well, because we are seeing that model be successful across the country. But, you know, again, it's the very early stages. So any kind of like project piece of it, I mean, I think that will take on its own animal once the study is done and things like that, but it's a good first step, I guess.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
We'll see you next month. Alright. Main event, FY25 budget. You're leaving?
Could be an easy vote.
Wow, okay. Phil, come on up, we actually have a spot for you. Yep.
We gotta see the denitator.
Yeah, right here, thank you.
I'm just gonna pull this up.
Okay.
Alright, there we go. This is, I'm gonna use the same presentation that's in the packet. So I'm just gonna scroll through this. Till we get to the budget. Here we go. Alright. This is our final budget hearing with the school committee, and hopefully after presentation and discussion, we can finalize this and then present it to the mayor, and then the mayor can put his part of his package to the city council. You've all received a lot of this information. As you all know, we've been doing budgets since January with multiple presentations. And for our viewing audience, this is all up on our website, so you can see the entire process that we followed. So, we've covered our budget assumptions, and as we all know, when you start budgeting, your contractual obligations really spearhead your budget. And then also, we have to be aware of our federal and state mandates, and a lot of these are also unfunded mandates. So we gotta prepare for that as we move into the budget season for next year. Then we talked about level service budget in the January presentation. I have, I did some, did a budget presentation earlier. So we came in of our level service, this is when we began the process, so level service city appropriation originally came in at a 6.65, and then the overall budget was at a 4.12%. And then, as we shared with the school committee, the level service use of funds, and then how that broke down per school and system-wide. And then as we've been talking about, this year's budget increases is mainly the non-personnel side of the operating budget. So that's the transportation, special education costs, I mean, I'm sorry, transportation costs, utilities, all of the non-personnel, and then the increase of contracted services due to inflation and costs. And then through this presentation process, we shared what, just some funding and some definitions and kind of how we formulate the school budget. And then we talked about personnel, and then non-personnel, as I keep scrolling here. And then this was really important, the demographic trends that we shared at a couple school committees, meetings. We looked at total enrollment, and that has, that's been fluctuating within 100 students over the past, you know, 10 years or so. We had a discussion, and we showed the trends of school choice. Students that are currently, 81 students are enrolled in the Newbury Public Schools, and then 23 students are leaving the district outside of attending other schools. And then we showed the demographic trends of the increase of our L population coming into the city of Newburyport over the past 10 years. Demographic trends of our low-income and economically disadvantaged students, and demographic trends of students with disabilities. And lastly, the trends of high-need students, which increase, which encapsulates all of those students. And this is over the past few years. This is where a lot of our funding for staff and support staff is to meet the needs of all of our students. And this is where, you know, you saw increases in special education, increases in counseling, support, and all of that. And then throughout that packet, we talked about Chapter 70, and then how that is broken down. We talked about school choice as we're scrolling. And then the budget, aspirational budget presented in March. Let me just take those off, sorry about that. So, from the level service budget and then the aspirational budget, we came in on March 4th at a 7.05% city appropriation, and then the overall budget coming in at a 4.57%. Then with some more budget work, and we looked at additions and changes to the cost centers, many of the increases that we have are all cost-neutral or cost-savings, and we broke all of this down for the school committee. And then on March 18th, through the work of our leadership team and the budget holders, the city appropriation on March 18th came in at 5.81%, and then the overall budget at 3.69%. And then April 1st, with more iterations, more work, we came in with the April 1st public hearing budget of the city appropriation at a 4.99%. And then we showed, I'm just taking these off, where the overall budget is at a 2.99% overall. So continue to work on that. We touched base with the mayor with a proposed city appropriation at 4.25. And so what we're showing tonight, as we get to this, I'm sorry, those are our previous... So we really wanted to talk through like three options, and so for us as a school department, we don't really wanna, I guess, change or modify the staffing patterns, because we feel the staffing patterns that we worked on is gonna meet the needs of all of our students. So what we looked at is shifting the cost and utilizing our reserve accounts to increase the reserve accounts on the school side, which will then bring the city appropriation down. But the overall budget is still gonna stay at the 2.99%. And now, Mr. Little Hale, I'll just talk in general, and Mr. Little Hale can speak a little bit more in general. So to go from a 4.9...
Superintendent, can I just interrupt you? So, can you explain why, what's happened between the last time we saw you and today, and why we're going from 4.99 to suddenly 4.74? Why are we going down from the April 1st meeting? In terms of the city appropriation?
Correct. So the...
What motivated that change?
Speaking with the mayor, a city appropriation of a 4.25 was the target that he asked me on the city side.
And Mayor, can you explain why that wasn't communicated the last time we talked about the budget?
Because I don't think we had got to that yet, so I mean, when I saw the last numbers that the superintendent came out with at the beginning of April, we went back to our drawing board as we're putting together all the numbers. We hadn't even had all of our department head meetings then yet, which we had since finished right before April vacation. And so I relayed to the superintendent that I'd like to see that try to get to as close, that's where we're penciling it at right now, at 4.25. But I also said, you know, I think we should have the conversation. I think, I think if Sean can put together different revisions, I think we should talk about it. But I mean, the 4.99, that wasn't really close to where we thought we could fund our schools at.
Okay. So from my perspective, I know that you have department head meetings that you have to have and that maybe you don't know, you know, until, that you have to refine, and that's part of your process, but we've been talking about the budget since January and even from, since November, and this is a problem-solving process. You know, we, the superintendent brings us a level of service budget, we give him feedback, he continues to refine with his department heads. I feel like, to me, this seems very late in the game to be now doing another revisiting. To me, the fine-tuning should have happened at the, when the last time we saw the budget, and there was no feedback given at that, in that public discourse to lower the city appropriation or to do anything, really. We didn't get any public comments. So I'm feeling a little bit like we're doing a little bit of a scramble here at the last minute. I do want to hear your plan, but that's just, I'm sort of, I was surprised to see these changes in the budget book. And I, I just want to try to put this in context of a lengthy process to get here, and then suddenly these three changes to the city appropriation. And one of them would include, the 4.25 would actually include a cut to the budget. So I'm just saying, that's where I'm coming from. So as much as you can explain how this impacts, and I know you probably have this prepared, but how this impacts the budget, you know, it's, even though we're staying at 2.99 overall, how we change things within these line items, if you could explain how that's gonna impact or put us at risk in any way.
Yep.
Can I just follow up, kind of part of that? Mayor, this seems like, this happens every year, since I'm on the school committee. Why is it that the city waits until April for the department heads to come to them? Not just, not just your administration, it's six years.
Yeah, I know, we start in March. I mean, we have a process where they put their budgets together, and...
But my question is, why does the city...
Once they submit everything by mid-March, then we set up our individual meetings and go through the numbers from there. So Ethan's put together a lot of the worksheets that we have to go, and we know kind of where the asks are and what we have, and then we have conversations about, we let them walk us through each department. Again, there's...
But I guess in general, I'm curious why the city, and this may happen with many cities, why don't you start in November like we do?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. I don't, I don't know.
Is that just, that's the habit? It's one of those things, it's always been that way, do you think?
No, I mean, I think we start, I think they start having budget conversations, I would say in December, and then we kind of kick it off in January, and then they have time to, we have forms that they pull out, put together as far as what their budget looks like. We have a narrative that goes, that goes with that, and then we have meetings individually to go through all of those.
I think it would be great if they kind of followed our lead. I think, I mean, this is all we talk about forever, and, you know, and unfortunately, no one comes to these meetings. Maybe people...
I mean, I just like, the way I look at the process, like, you know, we had the numbers April 1st. I assumed they were gonna change again, because they typically do. We don't have the number on April 1st from the school typically.
I'm just saying as a matter of practice, maybe we always expect them to change in April because the city side doesn't do the earlier work like the school district does. And if they started in November, because their expenses can't change that much by the time of spring comes, so maybe we wouldn't, maybe each April, we wouldn't have this, you know, we're gonna lose 3/4 of a percent or whatever it is if the city followed the school districts, as a school districts example.
I guess what I try to do is, I want us to have that conversation. If you think this, we should be, you know, allocating more money over what we have kind of penciled in. But I mean, I think that, I don't think we were having that conversation in the past, and that's why I kind of like that conversation happening, which is, I'm glad he put together different, you know, different versions of this. You know, at the end of the day, when I move to this role, I've gotta find a way to fit our school budget into a larger city budget.
No, I understand the larger picture, but...
Yeah.
Surprise would be easier if it were earlier, I think. And that's really, I don't really, actually really understand who the bosses of the department heads are, anyway. Who says, "Get me this by this date"? Is it you or City Council?
Oh, that's me, yeah.
I just think it would help.
It's the mayor's, it's the mayor's budget, and the mayor submits it, and the city council gets to...
Okay. Thanks.
Well, that would be helpful for historical context, you know, given what's happened in your administration versus, maybe the superintendent can speak to, over the past six years, is there a common discrepancy? Meaning, are you generally going in, and then the mayor is kind of saying, "Can we level this out? Can we fix this? Can we move from 4.9 to 4.2"? Is that generally how it's gone?
Yeah, I think as we, as we... Yeah, I think as we, as we go through our budget process, um, and then as the cities, you know, working on their departments, it's, um, you know, like, for us to develop our budget, because eighty-five to eighty-seven percent of the budget is through city appropriations. So if we have, as we go through the budget, is we get that number, then we can adjust.
How late in the game does that usually come?
Um, it's, you know, sometimes it, it all depends. Sometimes it's, um, the budget at public hearing, um, you know, is the budget, and then for the final vote, it hasn't changed, and then sometimes it changes, so.
I would say, my impression coming in when I was on the school committee prior is that, and not just Sean, even prior to Sean, they were given a number right off the bat and said, make it work. And I didn't think that was a good way to have that discussion about where we think our, what do we think our school needs?
Yeah, I remember you said, I want an aspirational budget.
Right. And that's why that, I mean, we weren't really doing that aspirational budget until a couple of years ago, which I thought was a good, good conversation to have. So, again, you know, it, it didn't feel like we were having good conversations about how do we move our schools forward prior. So that's why, you know, again, is it perfect? I don't know. I'm happy to, to try to change it, but I mean, I don't want to give Sean a number in January and say, hey, look, it's only going to be two point nine this year, make it, you know, make it happen. Unless we know, like, it's some, you know, catastrophe statewide was happening or something, we knew, you know, that we would have to make some big cuts. Um, you know, I want to have, I want data to be a part of, you know, the process we go through for budget, and I want to look at, you know, where we're having to set success, where are we seeing gaps that we need to really invest in, and that should all be a part of the conversation as we move through the budget process.
I was, I was just, we do the, I'm looking at our calendar, we're just gonna vote on tonight possibly? Our meetings calendar, so the joint City Council School Committee is in November. Those meetings really don't seem to do a whole hell of a lot. You know, I mean, you know, Ethan gives his bit, we give ours, and then there's almost no discussion. And I was thinking that maybe that becomes a, an actual working meeting, and the department heads from the city are, you know, somehow more involved, because, you know, we, we have our bit, and the principals come up and give their wish lists and things, and things like that. So I guess I'm saying, the city side is kind of like hidden, even for that, that November joint meeting. It doesn't really seem to be a joint meeting, other than Ethan presenting projections for the following year. It's not, am I being totally unclear? I'm trying to say that the, the department heads probably have an idea in November, if we have an idea, what we're gonna need for the next year. So if they were more involved-
Yeah, possibly, sure.
And then we would, there wouldn't be the surprise, you know, this April surprise. But I do agree, I mean, I was one of the people that said, stop demanding X percent without working at it first, you know?
Right, right.
Ask for what you think you need to move the schools forward. So I, I do appreciate we're still doing that. Um, it's just-
Yeah, the November thing, like I said, I, I think that's in our charter to have that meeting, and I, I've always thought that was a meeting that really the City Council put in to have so they could get updated on the schools essentially.
Yeah.
And then Ethan can, Ethan, you know, gives us an overview of all finances, but-
I'm not sure if it actually accomplishes much, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
So, here we are. If we can get back to, I think you just presented the first, or-
Yep, we just started the first.
You want to say anything more about that first revision?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So, so I think the goal for us to, I guess, to come in closer to that four point two five is not to, obviously, we're trying not to impact staff and services. So it's really to utilize, um, our reserve accounts, um, to spend more of those down, right, or to utilize more of that funding to bring the city appropriation down. So for this first version, the four point seven, the proposal will be to, to utilize more choice, approximately ninety thousand dollars of choice funds, and if we use ninety thousand dollars of choice funds, all of the various budget presentations that we've done over the past few months and staffing patterns, nothing changes. It's just dipping a little bit more into the school choice, uh, reserves. So that's the ninety thousand dollars that would bring it, the budget down from a four nine nine to a four point seven four, and then everything else pretty much stays the same. So it's not having staffing impacts or things like that.
Can you explain what the downside of reducing of, you know, what is the goal for our school choice balance, and how does this impact that?
Well, I think, um, and Phil can probably talk a little bit more on this. So for our goal for school choice, um, we were looking at keeping a balance in there of like three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars. And remember, um, school choice is like free cash for the city side, so you don't, it positions you, uh, if there's something that occurs during the budgetary year. And I think one of the strengths of the school system, since I've been here, um, when, when we've had, for example, if we had move-ins for newcomers and we need to hire a new L teacher or something like that, that gives us the opportunity to hire staff without going in front of, you know, the City Council, and so it's almost like that, that's a, an aspect of that. Bringing that down to another ninety thousand, I think, brings us into that threshold fill of the three hundred to five hundred, so.
One of the things, I hope this-
I don't know why these all are turning, they're all turning away from us.
They can hear me, I hope.
They can hear.
So, um, part of the reason, and we looked at this when the issue came about, can we bring it down to the four point two five? And I spoke to superintendent, and I said, well, I want to look at it, and the goal is not to change your overall budget, just change the funding sources-
Right.
-to keep it going. So first one I looked at was school choice. Why I looked there is that, um, we initially put the budget together back in January, I was looking at school choice coming in at like five hundred and fifty thousand this year, but it's actually coming in at seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
So we're getting more revenue in, and so I'm looking at sort of like Circuit Breaker right now, which is, I'm planning to spend next year what we get in this year. So that means, you know, I'm trying, Sean said three to five hundred thousand, I like to keep that around five hundred thousand for my year-end amount. We're gonna dig a little deeper into it this year because of stuff, and again, next year, I'm anticipating we're gonna end somewhere, depending on how many students we get next year, school choice.
Yep.
You know, all things being equal, we'd be around five hundred thousand at the end of next year. So, you know, part of it is digging a little deeper into that amount.
Right.
But still leaving us the flexibility in case something, you know, pops up that we're not prepared for.
Yeah. And I would just say to the budget, to the, to the school choice balance, you know, we have no guarantee that that money's coming in.
Correct.
We know what we have now.
Yes.
But there's no guarantee that next year we're gonna have anywhere close to the same amount.
You can't, you cannot base, I mean, when you start utilizing reserve funds, you, I mean, we, we can utilize that, but that's not a budgetary plan.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's not sustainable. Um, but, you know, to bring down the city appropriation and to shift the funding source, you know, we, we can do that for the, the four point seven four.
Okay.
Okay?
And back to your point, you're absolutely right. That's why, from the budgeting standpoint, both with Circuit Breaker for special ed as well as school choice, we will budget to use what we know that we already have.
Right, exactly.
Not build the budget-
Anticipate.
-on the hope of what we're gonna get next year.
Right, right.
Right. So the, the next, um, proposal, let me just take-
Can I get me one of those?
I know, you have to. Um, and I'll have Phil explain this, because now we're kind of digging a little bit deeper. So the first one was the ninety thousand out of school choice. Now we start looking at other, uh, funding sources, and I'll have you take that.
So, so overall, to get from a four nine nine to a four two five is approximately a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar number. So the question is, how do we, can we go with two hundred and seventy thousand from other funding sources in order to bring down the, uh, the city allocation? So that's why we did it in three tranches, because, you know, two seventy divided by three makes it ninety thousand, it's a little bit easier. And since, you know, it is Math and Statistics Month, I should have the third graders help me with this.
[laughing]
So anyway, so for the second ninety thousand, or overall change of a hundred and eighty thousand, we're gonna look at taking another ten thousand out of school choice, so it's a total of a hundred thousand. Uh, we're looking at fifty thousand additional coming out of revolving accounts, primarily sports, and that's one where we are digging into our, what's in the bank, so to speak, to take care of that. Another twenty-five thousand from other tuition, which is the foreign exchange tuition. Um, I did speak with, uh, the high school principal, Mr. Wolf, and I know we've got two students right now coming in next year, so that's why I bumped it up. But it also means that we're, we haven't used any of that money over the last couple of years, and so we're really digging into that for next year. And then finally, the other five thousand was a slight tweak to our entitlement grants. Uh, we got an initial preliminary number for Title I for next year, and it went up a little bit, uh, it went up somewhat. Um, it's actually came in about five thousand more than I'd budgeted, and what I'd budgeted was actually more than what we got this year, so I was hoping it was gonna go up. So I just tweaked that a little bit to round it off to another ninety thousand. So again, to repeat, for round two, it's an additional ten thousand from school choice, fifty thousand for revolving accounts, the, primarily the sports revolving account, um, twenty-five thousand for other tuition, which is the foreign students coming in, and five thousand from our entitlement grants. And I want to make sure it's clear that if I'm taking more money out of the revolving accounts for sports, that money's only being spent on sports expenses.
Right.
You know? So what I'm doing is, I'm taking line items that originally we're going to budget coming out of the general fund, now I'm going to just budget them coming out of the revolving account. So now that gets us down a hundred and eighty thousand, so now we're down to a four point five, and we just want to go to the last one.
Mm-hmm.
And so then finally, to get down to the four point two five, again, it's another ninety thousand, and at this point, that is, uh, undetermined where we might get it. You know, again, keeping what we, our goal, which is to keep it at the two nine nine, because that is what we feel as a district, we need to be able to service the students for next year, funding another ninety thousand. I can't clearly identify that right now. Going forward, you know, there's still some things going on. We may have some additional retirements coming in that are not reflected yet. We, we may, you know, have some turnover, and there's always turnover savings in terms of staffing. So, you know, haven't truly identified where that's coming from yet. But, you know, and I've had conversations with the superintendent about this, you know, if we have to go in, if we want to keep it at the two nine nine, and we have to get it down to the four point two five, from my perspective, as the budget manager, I'd be comfortable going without fully identifying that other ninety thousand yet. I mean, there are ways that we should be able to hopefully, you know, do that next year, otherwise I'll have to dig deeper into some of our reserves to get it done. But, you know, that, that is the plan in terms of going through this process and showing it in the, the three different levels.
Could, could you just, um, read the numbers on school choice again? I, I was wondering the, so I know what your ideal is.
Yep.
So I guess what is the number sitting at right now? Well, if, if the budget didn't change from, you know, last week, what would be the reserve account?
Well, if the budget didn't change from last week, we had planned to use six hundred and fifty thousand, and this year we're coming at seven fifty, so it's actually a hundred thousand more. So I'd end up this year at around six hundred thousand left over.
Okay, so there's like a six hundred K balance-
Yeah.
For this year, and if we used ninety, you'd be at five-ten.
Well, I'm gonna end this year at six hundred thousand, no, I'll take that back. I'm going to end this year at approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is what's coming in.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna use that all next year. And so then my balance is gonna be what I take in next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, again, we don't have a guarantee that that amount's gonna come in next year, so we're using all seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah. There, there are some, I won't call them one time, but there are some things in this budget that we're using to get to where we are, but at some point, we're gonna run out of our ability to draw down much, you know, deeper into, you know, the school choice balance or the revolving account balance. But, you know, you know, those are things that we still need to wrestle with over the next couple of years. Now, on the other hand, if we look at Circuit Breaker, that's been flat since I started this budget, and the reason for that is, is that we got a big bump this year in terms of our costs. So Circuit Breaker may come in higher next year than what I'm anticipating, but that all depends upon the budget. You know, they usually get you seventy-five percent is the goal over the fifty thousand base. You know, some years it's seventy-five, but if you're listening to the chatter that's going on in terms of just this year's revenue numbers coming in, where things are not coming in as they expected, you know, when they go to look at the budget, I hate to say, one of the things, one of the first things they look at is Circuit Breaker. You know, it's a big number, and, you know, I know Jay Sullivan normally sends out his reimbursements during the course of any year. If it's budgeted at seventy-five, he'll send it out at seventy, just in case there aren't any nine T cuts that come through, and then suddenly he's gotta scramble to make it up. So, you know, Circuit Breaker is one of those unknowns for next year. You know, our overall out-of-district tuitions went up this year by about eight hundred thousand, so we would expect our Circuit Breaker number coming in next year to be much higher, but I'm digging deeply into, um, our year-end balance to make it work. Again, you try to end the year, you try to end the current year with what you're gonna do for Circuit Breaker so you can use it next year. We're not gonna make that this year because of the bump up. Next year's a year to try to get it replenished. So in terms of the strategy, looking down the road, that's what we're trying to do. You know, trying to get us to the point where we still have the flexibility as a department so that we are prepared, or we can take care of any unknowns that may come through. You know, it's just, you know, don't want to have to, you know, say we've run out of money, have to go to the City Council and ask for additional funds.
They love that.
Oh, I know they do, and I never want to do that.
No, no. And I, and I will just say, we had this conversation last year, right? We knew this was gonna be a tough year, especially with Esser running out. I mean, that's a, that million dollar number going away, that's, that's a huge, huge number, right?
Well, luckily we didn't do staff, like other cities did.
Yeah.
I think we absorbed some staff from that.
Well, in the first couple of years that we did, for, for this year-
Wouldn't continue, though. We didn't hire an English teacher with Esser.
It's like staff for learning loss, that kind of thing.
Like, like Amesbury hired staff based on Esser cash.
Right, no, 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 I think we used our Esser money wisely, but, I mean, we knew that it was gonna come in game, that was gonna, that was gonna impact the overall budget when, when that, that funding went away. So, like I said, here we are.
But, you know, for Esser for this year, again, we were using it for one-time items.
Correct.
So we didn't have to, we weren't hitting that cliff nearly as hard as a lot of other districts are.
Yep.
So. I think that was a real long explanation.
Well, I don't want to end up in the spot where, like, payroll and Amesbury are, where we come down to whatever the number is, and then you have to lay people off in July.
Correct.
Yeah. I, I think, again, this budget, um, the staff has done a lot of work in terms of looking at staffing and other, you know, moving things around, shuffling things around, and making sure that we're utilizing the funds, um, so, again, meets the needs of the kids. So, um, I don't anticipate, you know, any problems in terms of staffing issues, again, because it's a very, from my perspective, it's a very conservative budget. You know, we're not going in saying, we need, you know, we need fifteen reading teachers. I say that because I live in Melrose, and that's what they're saying. We're not coming in saying that, you know? So I think in terms of that, we're, we're in good shape.
I think we're fortunate, too, kind of like how you look at the DPS on the city side, that we do have other funding force. I mean, it's amazing what you guys have been able to do the last few weeks going through this process, as far as moving things around and really not losing anything. You know, I can't do that in all the other departments, you know what I mean? Like, I don't have any other levers to pull as far as, you know, funding design for, for the other departments in the city. So, you know, it, it's nice we do have these pockets of, of different funds that we can move around to, to fit the budget.
Also wanna, you know, I mean, we're, you know, moving the district forward, so where I think, you know, since I've been here, the city allocation's helpful, but I'm not necessarily relying on the city allocation. The city allocation right now is covering, like, the salaries and the contracts. But we've been, I think, uh, very, I want to say aggressive, um, with grants, uh, in writing grants, and part of my superintendent's report is also to show the potential grants that we're working on. So I think that offsets, I think that also positions ourselves maybe better than other districts, because we have these other funding sources to fund a lot of our programs, like, for example, the Afghan grant, it's the second year that we received that grant, and that supports our L families and newcomers, which is $127,000. So that's a competitive grant that 11 communities got, and Newbury Port was one of them. So I think, you know, for us, as we have the vision and the strategic plan, we've never said, oh, we can't do that because we don't, you know, we don't have the money to do that. I think we have a great team that goes after those additional resources, where I think we're also, and then when I give a grant update, you know, the capital, the pathways grant that we received, now we're eligible for capital improvement grant, the security grant that once the city council approved that, now we're eligible for that green light grant, which could help out with security, which then, if we get that grant funding, then that will help offset some of the costs that we're talking about right now. So I think we also have a, I want to credit our staff for a lot of the work that they're doing, you know, outside of the school hours for that grant writing, too, so. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with the different options, you know, the original, the 499 city appropriation, the 474, the 4.5, the 425. And then behind all of this is the budget book, and through the school committee's input from last time, Phil went back and looked at the line items and identified, you know, where all of those positions were.
And I'm still in desperate need of an editor to, you know, catch my mistakes. I'll hand out prizes so you can find the typos that are in there.
Ms. Walker?
I don't think I'll find typos at this point, Phil, but I would like some explanation. So the budget summary that you, that you guys included in this packet is the 4.99 budget summary?
Correct.
Okay. So other than, so, so the main things that will change for the other two budgets that you presented tonight are the sources of funds.
Correct.
Okay.
Expenses will not change.
Okay. So however, I did look at the expenses that you presented to us last time.
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain why those changed?
Well, the overall numbers haven't changed, the numbers within the schools have.
Yeah. Can you explain that?
Because part of it is, you know, goes back to one of your questions about, you know, the interventionists.
Yep.
So we had them coded in the wrong places.
Okay.
So there was some minor cleanup work in terms of staff, did we have them in the right locations? Spent a lot of time working with both Pam and Nikki, our payroll manager, going through the staff list several times to make sure we got them in the right places. So there, there was some minor tweaking in terms of that. So that accounts, I think, for the most part, most of the changes.
Okay. I, it did appear to me that the sheet that we had last time was, was different, and I was trying to figure out why. So system-wide, the last time you presented to us, the system-wide was 13,000, and this, this time it's 4,000, or 4 point, sorry, 13.3 million, and now it's 4.3 million.
Which is the first page here?
Page one. And then the last time, it was also page one.
Yeah. I'm sorry, what was it the last time?
14, I think if I'm, maybe I'm pulling up the wrong one, but it's 13.3 million?
Hold on. Give me a moment.
Which line are you looking at?
She's looking at the, you're looking at the overall summary, right?
Yep.
If you look at the summary page, page one of the budget book.
I'm there, yep.
So, last time, system-wide, it was 13.6. Wait a minute. Because it's wrong, that's why.
Gold star, Ms. Walker.
Well, no, that's not what I'm seeking. No, I'm just seeking an explanation.
No, overall, so the use of funds by cost center, that's wrong.
Okay.
I apologize, I did not catch it, that's why I said, I got to get a new editor.
But the category is correct, because that did not change.
Yes.
So that number is 42,000 by category, 42.7 million fiscal year '24 budget, 44 point, whatever.
Yeah, the budget hasn't changed, it's 44,500,018.
Okay, so it's just the...
My apologies for that. I am...
So I just, the main thing was, I just was concerned if something significant had changed.
No.
But it sounds like it hasn't.
I screwed something, I'm sorry.
How it's being totaled.
Yeah, I messed something up and went on my pivot tables.
Okay.
That will get corrected immediately.
I love pivot tables.
I, I love pivot tables, too, but occasionally...
And then you had, there were some questions last time about allocation of, like, the interventionist, so those, you took care of all those.
Yes, I did.
It looked like they had.
Yeah, they're in there.
Ms. Higgins, did you have any further questions about that? Because I know, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, I did, I just had a follow-up question, and this might not be, you know, the right place for your response, so it was still about the NOC middle school, and that math seems to be one of the biggest areas of challenge there, and still, even with the shifting, you don't see a math interventionist in the budget at the NOC. And so I'm not advocating that was out of position, but I'm just wondering, what is your strategy to sort of improve the math?
As was explained to me earlier today, there is a, there is one staff member of the NOC who is an interventionist who does both math and literacy, and I can't remember who that is. Pam?
Brenda.
Yeah. So she's buried in the special ed line.
Okay.
So I will break her out, so we can show her as a separate line, as an interventionist.
I mean, you don't necessarily have to break her out, so it's looking at, so if we look at the NOC middle school, right, they have a reading teacher, which is great. It doesn't have a math interventionist, and their, their outcomes just show math as an area of challenge, and so, you know, additional items in the budget might not be the way to fix that, right? And additional staff members might not be the way to fix that. So that's why I'm saying it might not be this conversation, right?
Correct.
But I just want to know, what in general is the strategy for improving the math outcomes at the NOC if it's not going to show up in the budget book?
Correct. So from, from our last discussion, April 1st, I, you know, Principal Marcos is here, I mean, not to present tonight, but...
He's like, don't come in.
Yeah, I mean, I think in the future, we can, he, him and his eighth grade team, they were looking at some of that data, and they would love to come in and...
Yeah, that's great.
Twenty-minute presentation, right, to show, you know, what's being done and what data they're looking at, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Do we have any other questions about specific things in the budget book? Keeping in mind that it's just, it's the same total, but just maybe some alterations?
Just shift in the sources.
Yeah, one messed up pivot table.
Excuse me. See that now?
I know, I did.
Are there any further questions? Go ahead.
Just because it seems, reliance is not the right word, but because there's a heavier reliance on school choice funding, are there any updated numbers about the incoming students?
I think I can present that. We have had more students apply, so maybe at the next school committee, I can share those numbers.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, we have a, I think we credit Newbury Port Public Schools, I think a lot of families are interested in school choice.
But there was a discrepancy, this is not a value judgment, but there clearly was a discrepancy between what was allocated, and you, you asked for the specific target number and what had applied at the last meeting. I mean, it was 81, right?
The 81 is the total we have currently.
Currently.
In the, in the district.
And next year, wasn't the target similar?
No. We, I think next year, I think we opened up, I think, I'm not sure how many full seats that we opened up, it could be, we typically don't get all of those seats filled.
Yeah, I think, like, ninth grade, we had a ton, but the rest of them had enough.
Ninth grade typically opened up 20 seats.
The rest of them were pretty right around the number we opened up.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I can give an update at the next school committee. But it's, it goes back to Ms. Walker, and, you know, we, we don't want to be developing our operational, we don't want to be basing our budget on school choice.
No, but you said that.
Yeah, that's not...
Depending on that, it's not...
Right. I think at this time, to get to the numbers at this point, to utilize those reserve accounts, we are bringing them probably lower than we've ever have, especially as Phil said, with the circuit breaker. So we just don't want to make ourselves vulnerable into the next school year if we do have scenarios that we get to utilize funds.
It's similar to every year dipping into good cash to affect the tax rate, right?
Sure, and that's going to be a variable number, depending on how many of those seats you fill, so it's a very...
Right, you go to that well too often.
To track and be aware of.
It takes years. Run out of water just to fix.
Can I?
Yes.
Because I know we're going to head into a vote, can I ask the superintendent and business manager what your recommended option is? And I legitimately want to hear your honest opinion.
And if it's not on this page, we want to hear it.
Well, I think, you know, I think that the public hearing, the 499 and the 299 overall, we were comfortable with. You know, and I think we gave options, you know, the, you know, the other two options, you know, down to a 4.5. I think once you start going, I mean, I'm not comfortable where we can't really identify the source. We may have potential retirees that we might be able to have some funding there, but it's, I think, once you get into the 4.25, you know, you're not really, I mean, it would, might be the next school committee, the school committee meeting after that.
Yeah.
To show where that, those funds, that extra 90,000 is going to come from, so.
Sort of a recommendation.
Sort of a recommendation.
Sort of, a little bit of waffling.
So, I, I get that this is tough, right? I mean, and I hope you understand it's tough for me and my, my seat as well. Again, I don't plan on, on, on voting, but if you decide to go with a 4.5, I can promise you I will do my best to get us to a 4.5. I mean, I guess I can't guarantee it, but I mean, I think, you know, I appreciate, you know, the background and, you know, the work that's been done to, to work with all the accounts that we have to make this work. Like I said, the bottom line isn't changing, which is great, it'd be one thing if we saw a massive, like, decrease in some of these lines that, that we're asking for, so we're not losing anything in all this, it's just, how much are we comfortable with using, you know, the levers that we're using to get us to the number that we need to get to, so.
So from my lens of this, I'm sorry, I didn't respond.
No, go ahead.
From, from my lens, I, I feel most comfortable with option one, or even if you, you know, played with those numbers to even 100,000 of choice, right? I know 90 is somewhat arbitrary. Is from, I, I don't want to use up our whole school choice balance, right? I'm not going to advocate for that, but it seems like it's still a really healthy, you know, around 500,000, even dipping into it for this hundred or so thousand dollars. And I guess from my lens, and I know it's a, it's a difficult seat, and this is always a difficult position, but to, but us in city council, you know, we're not, we're not on two different sides, right? We're all representing the same city, and the school's choice funds, from my perspective, are, you know, 80 students that are coming into our city to utilize our resources, and they are bringing, you know, some funds with us, but that is this, like, you know, free cash type of thing. And so if we can utilize some of that funds to make our full city budget a little bit more palatable, you know, I don't know what would need to be cut, right? If it was, if, if our gap right now is 270, you know, it doesn't sound like a huge number, but if our gap is 270 with their ideal, and we can make it 170, like, that's $100,000 he doesn't have to cut from somewhere else, and that $100,000 is still serving our city, right? It's still serving all of us somehow. So it's just a matter of, like, if, if this is, you know, essentially free money that we're getting from students that are coming into our city, then we should try to use those funds to, you know, support the, the city side's budget a bit. So, you know, I, I don't feel comfortable going all the way to option three, or even using a lot of these other revolving accounts, but the school choice fund, I do feel more comfortable using for that reason.
Anyone else like to weigh in?
Can I just say something?
Yes, please.
As the business person, I'm comfortable if, at the four, five level in terms of the other uses that we're using. I wouldn't make that recommendation to the superintendent if I wasn't comfortable doing that. I understand your concern about that. School choice, luckily, is coming in much higher this year than we anticipated, which allows us to increase that usage next year. Who knows what happens fiscal year '26, because we don't know. You know, digging into revolving accounts, you know, one of the criticisms we have heard in the past is that the athletic revolving account balance is too high, and I know that we've been using some of it this year for some capital items, but I'm comfortable digging a little deeper into that if we have to. It's still going to have a probably couple hundred thousand left in there when all is said and done, but I can't keep doing that every year. You know, I could do this for one year and, to get us through, so. My personal opinion is, four, five, I think is doable. Going below four, five, then it becomes, as I said to the superintendent, then it's going to, I won't say hurt, but it's going to be far more difficult. And that's just my opinion that I'm giving to the committee.
Actually, did you want to say something, Mr. Callahan?
You can go, unless you mind.
No, you had your hand up first.
I'm comfortable with the athletic revolving thing you're discussing, as long as it doesn't encourage the further expectation of parents paying for athletic materials.
You know, we've, we've...
Ms. Walker and I are going to give a report at the next meeting.
Looking forward to it.
Just uniforms and equipment. Just kidding.
What is?
Go for the highest number. Let's vote on the highest number.
I didn't hear what you said.
Can I see that certificate you just got?
Uh-oh, rescinded.
You know, again, we, we did, you know, and I did talk with the athletic director a couple of things in the budget. We did address a couple of the needs in terms of both the amount that's needed for the rental of both the ice hockey rink, as well as the golf course greens fees, so we, we upped that line pretty substantially for next year. We doubled the line for uniforms, so two of the athletic director's biggest concerns have been addressed in this budget, so.
Good, that's good.
You know, again, we tried to address, you know, the things here and there. You know, the biggest thing from my perspective that's really tied our hands is the increase in electricity, you know?
Utilities.
Utilities is what's, you know, really, if you look at where we're spending our money for next year, it's increasing utilities and it's, and I hate to, I hate to keep picking on them, but, you know, it's out-of-district and tuition for special ed, as well as transportation for special ed. You know, transportation for special ed, if you go back four years ago, we were budgeting under 700,000, and for next year, we're at 1.1 million. I mean, and your number of students has not really changed, so, you know, that's an expensive item. Of course, the good news is, you know, with the new bus contract, regular transportation, you know, it's at least good for the next three years or five years, so. Special ed, you know, is still going to be a challenge.
Ms. Walker?
Yeah, so I'm most comfortable with these, of these options with the 4.99, but I am open, based on the superintendent and the business manager's recommendations, to the, considering the 4.74 city appropriation. And my, my concerns are about being, you know, yes, we are part of, we have to think of the city as a whole, I absolutely agree with that, but, but our primary responsibility is to the students and the, and the schools. And I am a little bit, it does make me uncomfortable, honestly, to be tipping, to be relying on school choice, yes, I think we can draw that down a little bit, that makes sense to me. Revolving accounts, I do get nervous about, you know, to what Mr. Callahan alluded to, next year, if we find ourselves in a situation, we don't have these resources to draw on, and we are now shifting expenses down to the parents and the families. And I think we all feel somewhat lucky right now, because we see what other districts are facing, but that doesn't mean we still don't have to be very careful about how we allocate our funds, because we could very quickly find ourselves in a very different situation next year. And, and so I am one to be conservative and keep those reserves as much as we can, keep that cushion. I don't think it's a substantial cushion, I think it's a responsible cushion. I think we continue to use those funds strategically, but not rely on them to offset basic operational needs. So, so I'm more inclined to support the 4.74 for those reasons. I think it does, you know, it does draw down on the school choice, but it sounds like, based on the business manager's input, that, you know, with the anticipated higher revenue next year, we're less at risk for doing that, but I am, I'm less reluctant, I'm more reluctant, sorry, to draw down on the other funds that you identified.
Can I just address one item?
You can certainly address one item, if the vice chair is, is okay with that.
If I may.
Go, go ahead.
In terms of the revolving accounts, I appreciate those concerns. If you look back over the last four, five, six years in terms of income coming in for the athletic revolving account versus what we spent, overall, in the last four to five years, and of course, we have to discount for fiscal year '20 because of COVID, even the last couple of years, what we're taking in is slightly more than what we've actually been spending coming out. So that's why I'm comfortable in terms of that additional 50,000. In fact, when I first built the budget, I had that number in there.
Okay.
And then I took it out just, you know, trying to, you know, get things to balance out. So again, that's why I'm comfortable with it, you know. I don't make recommendations that are going to cause me to lose sleep at night because it does no one any good. And I also don't like big promises I can't keep. So again, my recommendation, you know, four, five is doable, but that's not my call, it's your call and the superintendent's call. That's just my opinion.
Would someone be prepared to make a motion at 4.5? We'll still discuss it and perhaps we'll do a roll call vote?
But the mayor will find the extra money, gives back up to 4.99. This is, we won't have to talk about this.
You can do it, Sean. $270,000. That's more than half of the recreation and youth services budget.
No one wants to do it? I'll do it. So in accordance with policy D B G, I move that we accept the 4.5% version budget for F Y '25. Did I include everything I needed?
Well, it's the 4.5% city allocation, but overall, but overall 2.99.
Version?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I need a second.
Second.
Discussion.
I don't mean to be too blunt here, but when, it sounds like you're reallocating funds from reserve accounts. So we shouldn't be in the situation where we come back once the mayor has responsibly figured out the entire city budget and ends up coming back with some recommendations to cut what we've come up with. Is that fair to say?
We.
Well, I mean, I'll just say that the school committee passes a budget, and then I try to fit it into my budget.
And cut $40,000. I mean, we're kind of catching the chase here. Like, is there going to be another recommended cut that we're then going to be discussing?
No, so we vote, and then it's the mayor's budget.
It's up to me, so yeah.
He can cut further, but he doesn't have to come back to us.
Yeah, I don't have to come back to you. So like I said, these guys have already done the work of where the budget's probably going to land.
So the question is, I understand that aspect of it. The question is, what would be the best recommended cut? Meaning, what are they then going to be left? What's going to be the first thing to go? For instance, last year was school supplies.
Well, I mean, I think they've already figured out, so like, if, let's hypothetically, let's say you pass.
Yeah, no, that's good.
If you pass 4.5, I'm going to do my best.
What they're saying to us is we're going to find the money in the reserve accounts.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is what's been played out.
So what they're saying right now is all the scenario.
This is a deeper discussion than what happened last year.
Right. What they're saying right now is they won't have to cut anything. They'll just be pulling the money from different places.
It would be nice if we had some comfort with that. That would be good.
Yeah, right.
If that came to play, what I'm hearing is that that can be worked with.
Right. Yes.
Right, and through the budget, through our, just in general, through the budget process, the mayor, you know, according to Mass General Law, the mayor can reduce the budget to fit into his city budget, but also, city council can also reduce the budget too for their vote. So for us, this is, I think having a school committee support the school budget is helpful. But yeah, those, I mean, for us, the next, you know, after tonight, you know, we're hopeful that it just keeps moving forward. But we have to be prepared if, you know, it could be June, that June meeting, where we could get additional cuts. So we're not, I don't think we're ready or positioning ourselves for further cuts right now. But that's something that we always, there's always a Plan B, C, and a D if we need it.
I think that's what people want to hear, is that there's contingency plans for when and if that occurs.
Correct, but typically, if a school committee, you know, we all work together through this entire budget process, spend months now, whatever that number is, and then that gets sent to the mayor, then the mayor hopefully works it within his budget. Typically, it continues because the school committee's done their due diligence with the budget and something that we're all comfortable with. So hopefully, we don't have to make more reductions.
On the city side, you know, it just comes as a number to the city council.
Right, no, no, I understand all that.
So they can cut, they can cut a random number. They're not going to, they go through every line item of the rest of the budget where they can just say, oh, you're not getting that stipend or you're, you know, you don't going to get that travel allowance. They can do that level of detail with the rest of the budget, but you're right. I mean, when, you know, superintendent has to go in front of them, they could, you know, they can look at the whole budget, but they could really, you know, pick and choose what they want. And they haven't really done that, but it's never a good, it's never a good time.
Right, they could overall cut the budget by, you know, $500,000.
But they don't determine specifically what.
What, that would be up to Sean then to figure out.
Then Phil and I would go back.
If they went ahead and passed that budget, like, what's that look like?
If I may, to getting back to that, you know, budgets are, you know, as I like to say, you vote a budget and 30 seconds later, it could be out of date because you know the budget's based on assumptions at that point in time. And tomorrow, we could find out that suddenly they're going to make 9C cuts and the budget proposals coming out, the Senate and the House are going to have circuit breaker at 65%. You know, we're dealing with the unknowns. So, you know, we deal with what we think we know right now and how it's going to go. And I will try to do a better job over the next few weeks, setting folks minds, I won't say at ease, but give you a little more detail behind some of the balances in these accounts so you can see what's going on. Because again, looking over the next couple of years, as we go down the road, you know, we can get through fiscal year '25. Then we hit fiscal year '26, don't know what it's going to look like. You know, next year's negotiations with the, our unions. So fiscal year '26 will be the first year for the new contract. So we've got those things coming down the road. And so we've got to continue to look ahead, you know, what's going on, you know. And again, because of the unknowns, I can only work with what I know right now. And with what I know right now and having spoken to the superintendent, and I hope we can do that, that, you know, coming down to the four, five, we can do it. Yeah, it's going to dig a little deeper than we would like, but then I'm hoping in the next couple of years, we start building the backup a little bit. You know, that's, that's sort of the longer range plan as we get, as we go along. Because I don't like doing a budget where you do this. You've got to cut it this year because you don't have enough, then next year you come back up. We try to level it out to, you know, keep it, you know, steady. I don't like budgets that do this over the years. Like, just try to, you know, keep it as best we can in terms of getting what the students need in order to get, in order so we can give the students what they need at the end of the day. And I'm not an education expert, you know, superintendent and those folks are. And so that's what we're working at. That's why we're sticking at the 2.99.
Thank you for speaking to the long-term vision. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, we're not accepting the budget, we're adopting the budget. And I do want to say that it can't move forward to the city council and the mayor without our approval. We also are supposed to be voting on cost centers, and I would be on, I would, I would say that we don't have the accurate cost centers in front of us because of that.
I can give you the correct number for system wide.
Okay.
So the correct number for system wide is 13,458,132.
Okay.
And I don't know what I missed in my.
And that's for the, that's the fiscal year '25 system wide cost center line item.
Correct.
And there's no other change to the other cost centers on that sheet?
Well, as you folks continue your discussions, I'm going to triple check that right now.
Okay.
Talk some more to yourselves. No?
All right. Egged on my face, that sheet is completely and totally wrong.
Okay, so I would suggest that without those cost centers in front of us, that I would prefer that we postpone the vote.
Okay, so then, Mayor, what's your deadline for us to vote on this?
I mean, so I have to turn in the budget, this is the first meeting in May, which does give us another meeting here to vote. I think we're going to be around this number, so I think that doesn't hurt us on our end. So, I mean, if you had to push it to that first meeting in May, you could certainly do that. We would have to get that into the packet the next day, on Tuesday of that week, to make it into the city council packet for their meeting. So we could do it at our first meeting in May.
Which is what, May 6? Is that?
May 6 is our next meeting, Joan.
And I would add to that, I feel more comfortable with just one present, one, one thing that we're voting on versus all these options and trying to, you know, I think this was a good discussion, but I feel more comfortable having a recommended option presented to us based on the feedback we give them tonight versus us picking from three. So if we can, not only would it be helpful to have those cost center breakdowns because that is what we're voting on, I think it would be nice to just have one number in front of us that we're considering and voting on clearly.
So if we did that vote on the 6th, that would allow you to get the information.
Like I said, it's very tight, so I mean, we would have to take the vote then.
Yeah.
But, you know, like I said, we would have to submit, be ready to submit our city budget the next day, which, again, at this point, I think we know where we'll be around. But I will say, I mean, right now, we're at 4.25 at the city level. So if that changes, then, you know, we're going to have to scramble at that point or, you know. So again, it just doesn't leave a lot of time, but I totally understand that we shouldn't be voting on the right information that's in front of us, so.
I guess.
We could also set up a special meeting before then.
I was going to say, another option.
And just vote on this, that's fine too. I don't know what that.
That's an option as well.
Like sometime next week, that would be fine too.
How are people feeling? People wanting to put this off for now?
I would feel better giving you a sheet that's correct.
All right. So I'll withdraw my motion, Ms. Yell, and we can talk about when we're going to vote on this now or if we want to just move on and save it for new business.
I'm fine talking about it now, if people are open to it.
Do we want to talk about having a special meeting, actually? Like now, do we want to talk about that?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Because it seems like it's, it's going to be too tight for you, Mayor, if we do it on the 6th to get information into the packet. Is it then very next night? Because that wouldn't even be something you could post in your packet.
No, we have to get it in.
No, we have to get it in by that Tuesday, so it gets.
Oh, turned in?
The packet gets posted, right.
Oh, okay.
We have a couple of dates there, so I mean, it's not. But I do think it would probably make a lot of sense to do a special meeting next week and just, just have this agenda item to go on.
Right, so next week starts April 29th, right? I'm just looking at my calendar. And, oh, that's actually a fifth Monday, so that might work. Do you know, can anyone check the city?
City council always is the last Monday.
Oh, so they are doing it on that Monday? Okay, right, so we can't do it that night. And then we have superintendent's council on the 30th?
But I shouldn't say that, we could do a, if we're going to do it Zoom, I don't know if you want to do it Zoom or in person, but we could do like a 6 o'clock special meeting. School community, uh, city council doesn't start till 7:00. So we could do that on Monday if you wanted to.
I'd rather do it in person.
I would also rather do it in person, but.
Yeah, if you could do it at 6:00.
6:00, that's fine.
6:00 in-person meeting on the 29th?
Sure.
Does that work for everyone? Yes? Okay. Let's, let's plan on that then. And Ms. Yell, can you check on the senior center? I would imagine it would be available where it's a Monday night?
The 29th at 6?
Yes. So April 29th at 6:00 P.M.
Can you do 6?
All right. So are we all set for that?
Yeah.
And move on, okay. So we're going to, we're going to move on then?
Point it clear, so for our budget presentation, are we, are we presenting the three options again? Or are we?
No, it sounds like.
I would personally prefer that you just present the option that you recommend based on your input received tonight.
Okay.
That was the question she tried to get you to answer.
Right, well, my sense, what, the way I made the motion for 4.5 because that's what I was getting, is the sense that they were both comfortable with that. It included everything that was presented on April 1st. So I was feeling comfortable because they were feeling comfortable, so.
Okay. And I will just say again, I completely appreciate that you were able to show us three different options where nothing was cut. And that's, that's huge. I mean, that's, I mean, again, talk about being in a completely different world than a lot of the districts around us. So again, I appreciate that, and in a tough year, you know, not just for schools, but for, for all departments.
All right, so the next thing we have is the Crest Collaborative Capital Fund Increase Request, which is something that doesn't directly impact us, but we do need to vote on it. So you can.
So we're, we're part of a special education collaborative with Crest, and then Newburyport is a representative because we send some students there. So basically, Dr. Giacola, who's the new director, so this vote is just to allow them to increase their capital fund limit. Right now, it's presently at 650,000 to 2 million. So this is more of a formality. This isn't going to impact costs for, for anybody. It's just really part of the law which we included, CMR 603. They need a vote similar to like if we wanted for our student activities account to increase it from like 50,000 to like 75,000 max. So this is what they're asking for. So if you look at the third paragraph, it says, "The current request to Crest membership school committees is only to increase the capital fund limit from 650,000 to 2 million. Crest currently has enough cash on hand in the 428,000 in capital fund account to cover the cost of the two rooftop air conditioning units." So they just want to move the money that they currently have into their capital fund. And then the 13 schools and all of their school committee members, our school committees have received the same information.
Were we missing something on this? I see the cover letter, but nothing about the AC units.
It should be behind it, right? You have the letter? You should have.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you have it, right? So that just gives a overall explanation of what they're trying to do.
I mean, I guess it's fine if I may speak, vice chair. I think 2 million's a giant number, and them saying, we're not going to use it, but they could use it next year because they're saying they have over $2 million in capital needs.
Correct.
So what happens if they come back with a million dollar thing next year? Are we in like a Whittier situation where we have no choice?
No, no, I know.
That was my question as well.
This is, this is no financial impact on the district, on our students going there. They're in the process of a capital.
Who funds this school?
The state, D E S C, funds this. This is a collaborative special ed school.
All D E S C?
Yeah, not all D E S C, but also membership, membership, yeah, tuition that we send students there. Some, we pay for our students, yeah. But these costs are not going to be on the backs of, it's, all of a sudden, it's not going to cost us extra money to send our students there.
How does that work? What do you mean? I mean, the money is going to come from somewhere.
So right now, they currently have enough money for this, this capital project, and what they want to do is take the money that they have and move it into the account. So.
Yeah, it's strange.
I mean, you could both know.
And they just, they just want all their schools to say, yes, it's okay to do that.
No, I understand, but it just seems weird that, you know, we pay to put our kids in there, which is fine if they're needed.
Correct.
Where is that number in our budget?
For that, that's the out of district placement.
It's part of our, our district costs.
This is one of the out of district placement schools, and being part of a collaborative, the costs are a little bit less.
So did they do the increase that the other ones did?
What's that? Yes, yeah.
Did they go up to the max?
I'm not sure, but I would imagine so, yeah. Yeah.
It doesn't relate to this, but how many kids have availed themselves to this program over the years?
I think right now, it's, so this is more, this is specialized programming, so we don't have many students. I think currently, I think we have one student that's there right now. But it just gives options for the collaborative schools, for students that need out of district placement. They also do some testing and things like that for us, so.
Like on an ad hoc basis?
What's that?
The testing.
So like if we, let's just say we had a student that needed a 45-day placement for, you know, an eval, this would be one school that we could do that with. And they have multiple programs for autism and things like that.
Did you say you had some language for a motion? I'm not seeing it in the packet here.
Yep, so.
Then I'll, I'll take it if you have it.
I think it would be right up here. So for the C collaborative, that top piece, request.
And this is something we're voting, this is a Mass General Law.
Correct.
Requirement, okay. So I moved, I moved to. Requirement, okay, so I moved, I moved to request, um, to increase the capital plan per Crest Collaborative from $650,000 to $2 million.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So, I just have a question. So, this article from 2019, it's from a Pittsburgh newspaper, the school committee, um, you know, as we approved a contract for the superintendent, this guy?
Mm-hmm.
Or is this guy formerly of Pittsburgh, is that's what it's saying? And now he was at, was he at Pittsburgh before he became the Crest guy? Is that what it is?
Correct, he was superintendent.
The question just happened?
Yeah.
Okay.
He was superintendent in Pittsburgh, and now he's a Crest supporter.
Do the contributing districts have anything to do with the, the decisions of Crest and their administration?
Yeah, so where, all the superintendents are part of that board, so we have monthly meetings. If you, um.
So you're in charge?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in charge. Part of the Friday, the superintendent's memo, uh, if you go through.
And read the whole thing?
I'm sure you do.
Bated breath.
There's usually Crest updates in there, and that's what that's referring to.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Yell? Oh, the mayor. Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments? Alright, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Um, we're gonna take a look at a draft meetings calendar. We're not voting on it tonight. So this was just modeled off of last year's calendar, it's in your packet. Ms. Yell, I did have a couple of things. We do not, we can remove the line for, uh, January inauguration, 'cause that's an every other year thing, so that can just come out. And then, on, um, January 6th, at the top of the next column, you could add organizational meetings, we always start the year with that. And, Mr. Callahan, I took a look, you know how you were asking about if we could do a Monday, perhaps, fall, um, when we fall on the 4th week?
Well, like this year, happens.
Yeah, but.
Let's pass over.
So, well, what I was gonna say is, I looked at.
After we spoke, I think that was the reason why we didn't do that, 'cause it was passing forward.
Oh, okay.
Sure. And that will change next year.
It doesn't, it doesn't impact February or April next year, because there isn't a 5th Monday.
Right.
So, I, I don't think there's, unfortunately, I don't think we can recoup any Mondays.
No, no.
Um, but I took a look at that, so thank you for the suggestion. For, um, any other feedback? It did put in the summer retreat, um, the same as we did at last summer, so it's, um, at the time of our first meeting in August, um, well, the date of the first meeting in August from 4 to 8. So we'd have a, a dinner break in there, rather than pick an additional date. And if anyone has any, um, any feedback in the interim, you know, between now and our, our next regular meeting, um, you can certainly email me if you see any conflicts or concerns. Anything right now?
I'd be ready to vote on it now.
Well, let's, let's give it the couple of weeks, just, you know, in case people wanna check things on their calendars. Um, and also, I do need Ms. Yell to revise a couple of things that are on here, so, we'll, we'll do that next time. Alright, um, however, we do need to vote, again, on the school calendar, which is the next page in your packet. If you saw the, uh, the explanation, do you wanna just, uh, quickly read that explanation, Ms. Yell, about what's going on there?
The, the calendar that was voted on to March 4th inadvertently had March 28th listed as Good Friday, and that was incorrect. So, March 28th really will become just a regular early release day, and Good Friday next year is actually on April 18th, which is a Friday. So that will change the calendar so that April 11th becomes a regular school day, April 18th will be the early release day, and it's Good Friday for the Ask Me Union, so they will get a half a day.
And it now falls before April break, which is perfect.
Yes.
Someone's psyched.
Someone's gonna change his vote. That's a late April vacation, huh? 20, 21st through?
It is later than this year, for sure. So that is the only change, correct, Ms. Yell? Just the, the one error was changed on here, and so that's the purpose for voting again. I don't have the policy, um, code in front of me for that. Does somebody have that, to make the motion?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
It might be on the detailed agenda, but I'm not at that point in the packet. It's not there, yeah.
I can Google this.
I'm looking it up.
Alright, thank you.
Ooh, last year, I hope we don't get any snow days.
I know, it's tight.
Very tight.
IC.
IC slash ICA.
Ooh, who wants to go?
Julia.
Thank you, by the way, thank you, Ms. Furlong, for getting these back on their database. She didn't hear me. For those of you don't know, we are now using the old database again, so you can search by policy.
It's great. Alright, so you can go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, I moved to approve the revised school year calendar, uh, consistent with policy IC ICA.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Callahan. Now, you have nothing further to say?
I already made my piece.
Good news, alright, any other discussion? This is pretty straightforward, okay?
Could've been a great Valentine's Day, half day right before vacation.
I know, it's my favorite holiday.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Heard it, Mr. Callahan. Alright. So, um, we're gonna get into our subcommittee updates, um, starting with FinCom.
Uh, we met on Thursday, April 11th. Just going through the minutes here, uh, one thing we talked about with the food services, um, two findings from the recent food services administrative renew, I'm sorry, review by DESI require action, um, in terms of adult meal prices. And the proposal was to raise the adult, so staff, I guess, uh, meal prices to 525, uh, which we approved, which seems like an incredibly cheap lunch. New student charge policy, we have to bring, uh, need to be brought into alignment with current regulations and mass law, um, it's under review by policy people. Is that in tonight's agenda, that one?
No, but did you guys discuss it?
Yeah, but we didn't do anything.
That's okay. No, you said we.
Yeah, but there was no vote, you know, it wasn't.
But you didn't have any objections?
No.
We didn't vote, but we went through, and you did make some changes, which you said you had sent to Ms. Walker, so.
Okay.
Did you not receive those?
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we definitely, I made sure.
There was no vote or anything.
I made sure, Ms. Walker, we went, we looked through all of the ones that you sent.
Thank you.
And there were a couple small things, um, which hopefully will be coming your way.
Okay.
When's your, when's your next policy meeting?
Um, great question, I can't remember if it's on the agenda, 'cause we canceled our May, our April one, is it the 14th? The 14th, sounds familiar, but I'm not sure.
Well, in any case, there's some time.
Yeah, there's definitely time.
So hopefully you can go back and check your notes, Mr. Callahan.
We're gonna meet up anyway about the.
Perfect.
Presentation for May 6th.
Okay, anything else from FinCom?
Yes, um, uh, bus contract, recommendation, making full community to award the contract, which we did. And then, that's all about it. Um, we have questions about the stuff that we talk about every year, that I'm still never really clear on, um, returning class funds after graduation, you know, what the rules are, it's two years, some people thought it was five years, ended up being two years, right?
Right, well, some of that was in one of the policies we were looking at.
And the district says it's out of our hands. I still think it's a bizarre practice to just trust somebody who's graduated from school to do the right thing with that money, but that's just me. Um, and the right thing being the five-year reunion, which is not a legally required event, so who knows what happens to the cash? No one knows.
Yeah.
And then we talked about the audit review of the student activity accounts, did we figure out when that was done last?
Uh, I think it was a couple of years ago, but we have, um.
It's supposed to be every year, right?
Yeah, we're meeting with, um, a person this Thursday to do a student activity audit, so we'll have that done this year.
Great.
Um, donations, how to acknowledge them, and what's the ceiling? Which, that's gonna be in the policy anyway, um, and that's it. That was all.
Okay, uh, ready for policy?
Alright, so, um, we have a second reading of the items, um, in your packet. Um, a few from J and I think E, and then, uh, most of the revisions to section K and L. And this will be our last part of the audit, so, it's a milestone. So the first, uh, item, policy, J I, currently J I C B is, um, update the code to J I C C to be consistent, um, some wording changes, but very minor, um, for that one, and then some cross-reference changes. The next one is E E A E C, which, uh, we are updating, we already previously had reviewed and updated as a committee, but we, um, realized in our review of these two policies together that there were some wording, different wording updates that we need to make specifically related to the district being responsible for its staff, um, and then changing the cross-reference. J R D, student photographs, um, this is a combination of MASC-recommended revisions, as well as our current policy. And, stop me if you have questions. Policy B H E dash R, um, we're updating the coding for this from K A A to, um, fit into a different section of the policies, based on a recommendation from MASC. So there's no change, substantive changes. Uh, policy K B A, uh, school parent relations, uh, minor wording changes. Policy K B E, um, some wording changes, and also incorporating some language from MASC version, which is the procedures related to establish, to what procedures will be observed to establish recognition. And I would note on this one, um, there is, item number three does reference 501(c)(3) status for our PTOs and booster organizations, that it is encouraged. We didn't say Shelby, which is what the MASC language is, um, but it would change, it would impact some of our existing PTO, existing organizations that are not 501(c)(3) if we create, if we mandated it, but we do encourage it. So, just saying that. K C D, K, um, sorry, K C D is, I remove it. K D B, public right to know, just updating the language. K D D, minor, um, wording change. K H A, um, eliminate, um, some of the components of this policy that are really procedural and not policy-related. And, K I, visitors to schools, some updating, um, of language, minor, pretty minor. Policy K L K, removing the reference to the Joint Committee on Education, which no longer exists. And then, uh, policy L B C, some, um, wording updates, um, to be consistent with MASC, so there were some new language added, based on our role, um, approving non-public schools, i.e. private schools, which all of us in the policy committee did not know we had a role doing, so now we know. So if there's a private school that's gonna be formed, we have to approve it.
In the City of Newbury.
And that is the final policy for your consideration. Anybody wanna make a motion? You want me to make a motion? Um, I will move to approve the proposed changes to the policies as presented this evening.
Second.
Give it to Ms. Higgins, I guess? Since she's on the committee?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That is a milestone.
It is, well done, everyone.
So, I think we can just jump over fundraising advisory committee, 'cause you're presenting it the next.
Hopefully.
Business meeting, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. And then, has Sisal met, or, nope, so we'll move in right along. Mr. Boger, communications.
We've not met, we're meeting.
We are meeting shortly.
This Thursday, the 25th, it's 6:00 PM.
Yeah, exactly, great.
Everyone's welcome.
So we will have more to report out, um, the next meeting. Superintendent's report.
Alright, we'll go hopefully quick. Uh, just some hiring updates, so we, uh, began, obviously, we advertised a, uh, Director of Facilities, um, to take over for Steve Berkholm, who'll be retiring, uh, in May. We met, uh, Monday before the vacation. We interviewed, um, six candidates on day one, and two internal candidates on day two. So there was two finalists, uh, that emerged as, uh, the top candidates, uh, from that pool. We are following up with them and reference Shacks, and then we'll be having a second round of interviews with both of those finalists. So, we're in good shape with that, we have two, I think, highly qualified, uh, people. And then also Steve Berkholm, um, although he's retiring, uh, is gonna be working with a new person for, uh, transition, so. Steve has everything already organized, and you all know how thorough Steve is, um, so we're, we're in great shape with that. The two other positions that, uh, we've advertised is, um, part of the restructuring is the academic, um, sped program supervisor, and then the social-emotional program supervisor, so we've advertised those. We have some, uh, both, you know, external and internal candidates, pretty strong, um, so we'll be, uh, conducting those interviews. And then the last one is the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. We closed the applications, we had, uh, a lot of interest, uh, both internally and externally, um, so we're, we're well on our way, uh, with all of those positions, um, of hiring, so by, I think, May 6th, I'll have, uh, more details, and then hopefully by May 6th, we'll have, uh, uh, someone to present, uh, for the facilities, Director of Facilities, so we're moving right along, uh, with that, in that hiring process. Any other questions on, just on those? Those are some key positions, um, since the approval of the restructuring, so we're, I wanna thank Pam Kaylee for all her work, um, of organizing and getting teams together, uh, for those interviews. The next piece is, um.
Superintendent, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
Can you say again what those two positions are that you've advertised for?
Yeah, so as part of the restructuring underneath Special Education, so we had, um, Program Supervisor for the Academic Sped. And then the Program Supervisor for the Social-Emotional Learning Piece.
Okay, and, um, what is the plan for the, um, the other positions, the consolidated?
Yep, so we'll.
Adjusted Assistant Superintendent.
Correct, so our Assistant Superintendent, so we, um, closed out, uh, we advertised, and, uh, we have, I wanna say around 30 applicants. So we're gonna screen those applicants, um, and then conduct those, set up a committee, which would be multiple stakeholders within the school system, as, uh, the initial committee. And follow the similar process, probably bring in six, uh, candidates, and then hopefully get to two finalists, uh, and then there'll be a second round of interviews, um, and then, uh, recommendation to the school committee.
Okay.
Of that position.
And that's intern, that was obviously internal and external candidates?
Correct, internal and external candidates.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Alright, so, we're, we're on the grant writing, uh, piece. So, once again, the Innovative Career Pathways Program, uh, we, that got that grant, we awarded, so for next year, it's $75,000. In the pathways, um, program we're looking at is the Environmental and Life Science Pathway. So with that designation, it's, uh, for just this pathway, it's $75,000 for next year, and then $50,000, uh, for the next four years. With that success, and with the team's, uh, ability, uh, to succeed with that, uh, career pathway, we are now exploring two other pathways that we'll apply for, for next year, and it would be the same funding source. We're looking at the Advanced Manufacturing Pathway. We're looking at the Advanced Manufacturing Pathway, the Medical Career Pathway, partnering with Anna Jakes, and then also a Business Career Pathway. We're looking for two. So, Mr. Wolf and his team will be writing for two more pathways. Each pathway, you get that same funding formula. So, it would be the $75,000 for the first year, and then $50,000 for the four years after that. The good news with that is we've been talking about the Integrated Arts restructuring through the N E F, and we've done feasibility studies. But because we're in this pathway grant, now we're eligible to apply for the DESI Skills Capital Skills Grant, which is up to 500 to 70, um, 500,000 to 750,000. That we're going to put together a plant, a team, we're going to write for that grant, and that might assist us with some of those integrated art spaces. You know, with the idea of CAD and the STEM going downstairs, you know, Sarah Lebedi's sailbar team. So, we're excited about that. So, that will hopefully be some good news in the future, you know, for those capital improvements.
Sorry, Superintendent.
Sure.
Can I just ask? I feel like I should know more about these innovation pathways than I do. Like, I know that they're exciting and interesting for us, but I'm not sure exactly, you know, what does that involve? What does this mean for like, what?
Yeah, so it.
What else to get from it?
Yeah, it really, it ties towards to our strategic plan in developing, almost like, I don't want to call it a vocational path, but a career path. So, right now, with Erin Hobbs and a lot of our environmental science classes in the electives, it's really taking those electives, tying in for a career pathway. So, students, you know, right now, they're getting the college credit, but also tying in for like a career pathway. So, tying in, you know, with local businesses. So, for that student that's a junior, and they're interested in environmental science, so they will follow a pathway of, you know, environmental science classes, electives, field study, and just really concentrate on that pathway.
So, does it?
It's almost like a vocational, it's not necessarily vocational, but there is aspects of that.
So, is there like a course of study? So, if someone says, I want to be part of this pathway.
Yes.
Does it say, you know, you're guaranteed an internship in this, or you're, you have to take these courses?
Correct. So, that's part of the program. So, it's really, I think, the state's ability to truly prepare students for careers. So, for our students in the Program of Studies, it will be that Environmental Science Pathway. It'll list the courses that they're looking to take, and then also the connections to the career path for that.
Do you think, just for another meeting, you could potentially put together like?
Yeah. Mr. Wolf come in.
I think we had that presentation? I think you might not have been.
You had it at the SISL.
I thought we had a pathways presentation here, too.
I think we had it at the SISL.
Oh, it was only at the SISL?
I think we talked about it here, but it wasn't like. We've been talking about it, but I can.
I have like the general idea, but I would love to see like a one pager on.
Yeah.
If I'm a student who enters into this, what do I get? What are all the things that are part of that?
You can also see them if you go into the Program of Studies.
Oh, okay.
They have them, you know, by department, and it's almost like a flow chart.
Correct.
Is the way I think of it. Like freshman year, sophomore year, junior year, here's the courses you're eligible for.
Okay.
It's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, and part of, yeah. So, there's, I think what I'll do instead of just throwing, I'll have Mr. Wolf and his team come in and just kind of show the work that they've been doing and how it ties in. But it's really, I think, for comprehensive high schools, it gives students the ability to be prepared for these careers, and one step ahead of, you know, just a student just graduating.
That would be, that would be great. I would love.
Like, for example, like for, when we're looking at the Medical Career Pathway, we'd be looking at developing a nursing program that students would have some credits towards becoming an RN, but will also have the ability to leave high school and apply for jobs with some certifications and qualifications. Yeah.
That's great. So, I would, I would love just a short presentation.
Yeah, 100%.
What's the, the.
It's exciting.
Environmental Science is one that we have now.
Yeah.
You know, what are they proposing to apply for and write? Like, what would be included in that? And then, I guess, one other thing that's connected to this that I'm wondering about is the difference between an innovation pathway and early college designation? And if, you know, for, I'll just pick the business pathway, why pursue the innovation pathway of business versus an early college partnership that has dual enrollment for business? You know, I'm just throwing this out there, because I don't.
Well, it'd be part of it.
It's kind of both.
Yeah.
So, right now.
There are two different designations. Like, you, there are two different approval processes. So, I'm not sure specifically of the difference of why, like, Newbury Report would apply to be part of one rather than the other. I just, I'm not clear on the, on what you get from each.
Right. Yeah, I think we can, I think it would be better to have, you know, have people come in and do an overview of what that looks like. But a lot of the, as you develop in these pathways, so a lot of times at the high school, you have multiple electives, you have multiple, let's say, dual enrollment or AP, right? And they're kind of scattered around. So, what you're really doing with your electives, your dual enrollment, so you develop a pathway where you bring them together. So, if you're looking for environmental science, so someone's become a, you know, an environmental engineer or in the environmental sciences, they, as they get into that junior year, they shift towards that pathway. So, they take some of those classes, they'll get dual enrollment credit, and then, you know, they'll be on that, on that piece. And so, some of it also will be like certificates. So, if you're looking at a nursing pathway, you'd be studying Biology, Anatomy, Physiology, and then you'd be partnering with Anna Jakes for career training. So, it's really exciting for us. And then the nice piece of it is the state is really funding this to the point where shifting, so kids are ready for the whole college of career readiness piece, which ties nicely to our comprehensive internship programs. But, yeah, I'll have Mr. Wolf come in, maybe even, you know, he's ready to go, so even like the May 6th, he could kind of give an overview. But, yeah.
Did you say that the other DESI grants that we're pursuing are related to the pathways approval?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, so it makes us eligible for grants that are in addition to the pathways.
Correct. So, this capital skills.
Yeah.
Piece ties in. So, if we're talking like for environmental engineering or engineering or CAD, those types of pieces, and we want to, let's say, take downstairs and renovate a space down there and have it as, you know, a STEM area, have it with a sailbar or robotics, then we could tie into this grant that we could receive, let's say, half a million dollars to renovate that space down there.
Great.
So, it's very promising. And once again, we talked about this in the budget, but the Afghan Refugee Support Grant, we were awarded again for $126,000, which helps staffing and support needs, translation, all of the things that we need to support our newcomers into the country. The other piece with the, another grant we're pursuing, and that we're hopeful for, is a Green Lights Grant. This is Matthew McConaughey and his wife's initiative, right? We want to meet both, not just one.
Well, it just, it's hard to acknowledge, they're both partners.
But, so, basically, the RFP just came out for this grant, so we have a meeting on Friday. And really, it shows like in-kind contribution. So, for example, what we pay, if we pay 25% of the cost, the grant covers 75%. So, for example, if we can show in-kind, let's just utilize camera system, keep a small number. So, let's say for security, we spent $25,000 on a camera system. We submit the grant, they will reimburse us 75%. So, the grant would give us 75,000, showing that we spent 25,000. So, that big security overhaul, we're putting together our, all of our information, all of the investments that we made for security upgrades, and this ties back to the COPS grant. So, for example, if we show we spent $100,000, we could receive $300,000 from this grant. So, that's what we're going to be putting together. And I'm hopeful for, to defray some of those security upgrades that we've done over the years with that seven-year plan that will receive some of that funding, which would be great. I know Swamscott went through this, for example, and they received the $320,000 from this grant. So, we're really excited about that.
What's the, what's the timeline on that?
The RFP just came out, so I think we have to the end of May to finish it.
Okay.
So, we should be in, we already have all the documents, because we were anticipating this coming out. So, we're, our first meeting for this grant will be this Friday, and we'll pull everything together. The other piece, the last grant that would just, just came out, and we're looking at this, is Senator Markey, and it's unlocking clean energy opportunities for schools. So, there's a variety of federal grants with this one. There's two areas we're looking at, is the clean energy. So, as Steve Berkholm, over the past many, you know, the past three or four years, exchanging the lights for LED lights, and then there's a lot of funding for mental health support in one of these grants. So, those are the two grants we think we qualify for, and that's another opportunity for us to pursue additional funding. So, yeah, that will, I think, help, especially with our budget, and defray some of the costs, hopefully, down the road. I think that's all I have for my superintendent's update.
All right. Any questions for the superintendent?
Just which, sorry, the other pathways, we're in the Environmental and Life Sciences, and the Medical Career Pathway, what was the next one that we're?
So, they're looking at Advanced Manufacturing.
Great.
The Medical Career Pathway, and then a Business Career Pathway. So, what we wanted to do is tackle one at a time. So, some schools try to do all pathways, they received funding for all, but they weren't positioned. So, this one, having one to go through the process for one, then we're looking at, when you look at a pathway, you want to make sure you have the resources. So, the Medical Pathway for us just makes sense, because we have Anna Jakes right down the road.
So, it would be like one per year? Is that the idea?
Yeah, so next year, we're going to apply for two.
Okay, great.
So, we're looking probably at the Medical and Career Pathway, and the Advanced Manufacturing Pathway. So, we would put that same application in, and then that's the funding source. So, for each pathway, it's 75,000 for year one, and then $50,000 to support that program for the next four years.
Any new business? And can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Which one? No, we, that one we didn't.
Put that on your fridge.
I'm going to put you on the web with that. Get you some traction.
You should have all your signatures there.
Really?
Yeah.
All right. Well, we'll put it on there.